We acknowledge that we're on the land and what we gather is the honest territory of this ethnic area. Always have a hard time pronouncing that approval agenda. We're going to make a slight modification of the agenda. We're going to put five A delegation to B and move up B and C. I just have a mover to Bob. Board, all in favor? Okay. Uh, now we can just approve the agenda as amended. Bob, board, everyone approve the agenda as amended. Okay. All right, so we have dog signage. Sorry. Oh, wait, off the minutes. Gary, I'm just getting, trying to get right to you here. Hey, adoption of the minutes. Can I have a motion? So Malcolm, Gord, everyone in favor of adopting minutes? Okay, now we're on to you, so. Gina and sorry, Gina Isabel. Yeah, take it away. And if I could just have you introduce yourself just for the record and then please feel free.
I'm Tina Graham, owner or operator of One Look at Six. Um, so we've come today to use this presentation about a visual aid of the dog park. Um, which hopefully help um dog owners have a better idea about the dog's behavior. Um, I happen to go on a tour in five years and I talk to a lot of people who want to be the basis. Um, and over the last few years, people, any since they're becoming a little bit tough, but also they're more talk about unpleasant experiences at the dog park. Um, and that makes me a little bit sad since I love the dog park. Um, I came to Little Town in Saskatchewan where there was no such thing as a dog park. We had a third road that we called George's Road. It could be for dogs. So George drove a lot. Um, and so when I'm here at the dog park, it's just like, it's amazing, still amazing. I want to keep it amazing. I want to help keep it amazing. But it seems to be, there are some roles and a role is good. Um, we're going to see more people, more dogs, and we need more education. Um, people, we, we want to use that as visual. It was good to hear the beautiful presentation. Um, so yeah, I'll let her kind of take it away. Um, it's about us.
Thanks guys. My name is Isabel. Um, I am the president manager of the SPCA and seminar. And a big part of my job is dog behavior education. Um, I also work with Sheena and our friend Megan. Once we do fundraiser where we um trade twenty hours of dogs at Sheena's place at What the Look. Um, and we take all that money that we fundraise and we pay for local pet bills for families. So we kind of came up with this idea one day when we were um all hanging out doing that. So this is our presentation for the Sick and Moose Dog Park Behavior Sign. The collaborative approach to the safety or collaborative approach to dog behavior. Positive interactions between dogs and humans for the Sick and Moose Dog Park. So our team, we've talked, Sheena and I have talked about it as well. Well, we have Megan Renee, who's the owner of Eagle Bag, Eagle Mountain Pet Ranch and Grubbing. And Cindy Reed, uh, who's the dog behavior center animal trainer in town. As well, we collaborated a little bit with Debbie Ford from K nine one one, who's always the voice to the animals. And Miranda Dusso, who is my boss. Now, a little bit of extra about who we are. We're a group of dedicated locals with a wide range of experience in the animal world. Reunited by a shared passion for educating and advocating safe, respectful, and positive interactions between dogs and animals. In addition to our individual outreach efforts, as I mentioned, we also host this monthly fundraiser offering doggy trans by donation. All proceeds going to helping local families cover unexpected veterinary bills. So why we are here? This is our proposal for the visual behavioral guide of the Sick and Moose Dog Park. We'll get a little bit more into it. This is why we need it. This is a question for the council members. In this photo, who do you think is the bad dog? Does anybody want to try and get asked? Don't be shy.
So one on the front.
The ten, the, the safety. So this is a trick question. Um, these are all my dogs, but there are no bad dogs, only misunderstood cute. You guess the middle one would have been right in this scenario. Uh, this is my dog, Sir Ducky Ken Howard Quakeroni the third. The most lovable, joyful dog you will ever meet in your life. He loves everything. He is not a good candidate for the dog park. I would never take him there because he has no sense of what's going on around him. He does not pick up on other dogs' cues. He believes everything is a game and everyone and everyone wants to be his best friend and bounce around like. As you can see, Max and Daisy do not feel the same way. Um, many dog park incidents happen, not because dogs are bad, but because owners aren't paying attention. There's misunderstood body language. Humans assume that dogs will work it out themselves. They're misbanding signals and there's assumptions about dog behavior. So these are some of the consequences when this happens. Physical harm, injuries inflicted during preventable incidences. Fear-based behavior. Activity stems from fear and anxiety, a financial burden. We all know that costs have gone up huge in the last few years. The high costs associated with veterinary care and social isolation, unpleasant interactions within our community. And in a small town like Sycamore, that can make a huge impact. So our solution, by using clear educational signage about canine body language, we can raise community awareness and foster safer, more positive interactions between dogs and humans. This helps enhance safety, prevents stress and injuries, and creates an inclusive and enjoyable environment through educating. We've broken it down into the next five categories. Hand safety, education of canine body language. Preventable stress, prevention of the size of injury, and change facility and improved enjoyment. Now I'm going to hand it off to Sheena here.
So number one, um, enhance safety. Ensuring safety for dogs and visitors is crucial. By offering this free resource on canine behavior, we can create a secure environment. Two, education on canine body language. Providing new guidelines educates dog owners on acceptable behaviors and educating owners to foster safer interactions and improve overall park experience. Three, reduction of um preventable stress. Misunderstanding body language is one of the major factors of unnecessary stress dogs. Since common signs of discomfort are often missed, this sign will help to teach dog owners how to recognize these signals and intervene early. Our aim is to create a positive, stress-free environment for both dogs and humans in the park, ensuring everyone feels safe and welcome. Four, prevention of, of fights, pardon me, preventious. Signs of discomfort are overlooked. It results in dogs having to increase their way of communicating. If yellow behavior doesn't work, a dog will move to red behavior cues, which can result in physical and mental injuries for both dogs and humans. Five, inclusivity. Promoting an inclusive environment helps encourage responsible ownership. Most dog owners refuse to take their dogs to the dog park and because, because of prior incidents, which have caused tension in our community, building a safe place for dogs, all shapes and sizes and personalities is important. And six, improved enjoyment. Once we've created a safe and welcoming environment where body language is respected, dogs can feel, I mean, dogs can play freely without the risk of stressful encounter or accidents. And owners can relax knowing all dogs are happy and secure.
So our sign, which will be um up on the next slide, and I believe you all have a copy of it. Uh, we're suggesting an eight foot by five foot sign. We've laid it out, so it's based on the fear. Um, it's called the bath scale. It's the fear aggression scale. So green, yellow, red, we believe that that was the easiest visual to get across to people really quickly. We used real um dogs. You might recognize the very first one. And he runs What the Wolf. He couldn't be here today, so we brought him in. But we used real dogs to, to show better than, you know, cartoons, what these, what these things look like in a real life environment. And then we added some pics and tricks on the end. You guys have any questions? Please let us know about that. Um, if not, we can move on to the last part here. So council members, will you help us create enhanced dog owner awareness and safety? The issue with the dog park are not just incidents, they're nationwide. It's something we see at the SPCA all the time. In fact, we don't recommend any dogs that are adopted through the shelter at the point to go to a dog park because lots of incidents do happen and they are in so high stress. So we're coming to this with you. How commendable would it be for Sycamore to take a leadership role in addressing this issue, setting a precedent for communities throughout the province? Thank you so much. Which is supposed to help create positive interactions, benefiting both dogs and humans outside of the dog park.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. That was very nice. I think, yeah, I think so. Yeah. I think that'd be helpful for council.
Questions once you have that handled.
Absolutely.
There's Ken. Sorry about that. And um, you know, we had a small area.
Okay, so I'll just wait till everyone gets one of these and I'll open up the, the council for questions, comments.
We handed it out.
Hey, I think all the councillors have it. Uh, councillor Evans.
Thank you. Through the chair. Uh, you awesome women worked really hard on this.
Thank you. It's a big passion of ours.
Very, very well done. Um, so as far as you know, this isn't something that's at most dog parks?
No.
A new thing?
Um, I've been to a few uh dog parks throughout the province. Um, and we're, we've worked in a couple of counties, yes. For several towns, and I haven't seen one yet. And so I think this would really make a huge difference. Now, it can be something that when people aren't watching their dogs and they're playing, they could be standing around the sign learning things. And all that, I know eight by five is too big, but it would be better. And that way people can say, oh, I didn't see it, you know, like it's there. And I mean, if this is something you guys want to go forward with, we have, you know, ideas of placement and stuff where we're sure people will be able to see it. Um, yeah, I just want to throw that in because I know that is big, but I feel like it'll grab people's attention. And the way is also put it in the color and everything. I think it'll really pop.
Councillor McCabe?
Yeah, thank you through chair. So I, this is a lot of information for one sign, so I'm just envisioning somebody going to the dog park and they're, they have their dog with them and they're stopping to read the sign. So now you have three or four people with their dogs all in the same spot. So you might be creating a hazard by them stopping to read the sign because everyone would conglomerate in front of the sign with their dogs.
Well, I do have noticed a lot of the dog park people congregate as it is, whether there's a sign there or not. It's, it's a social activity for people as much as it is for their dogs. So we're hoping with the sign that if they migrate towards that, at least that gives them something to talk about. And like they read through it and understand, like, oh, maybe I should be paying more attention, or maybe I should be being around people or taking my dog away from people and away from some dogs. That, that education is there that it kind of gets the gear to going thinking.
And my second question would be, thank you for your chair. Who you propose advocates the sign? Who, who makes the sign? Who pays for the sign? Who maintains the sign?
So. Yeah, we were, uh, we wanted to bring this presentation forward. We actually have not looked into base the sign. Uh, we figured the city or the council would know a bit more since there are lots of signs around the city of Sycamore, who kind of points us in a direction where we can figure out how much it would cost. We hope that it would be paid for by the city. Um, and you know, maintenance would be upheld by the city as well. However, that is, you know, something we can look at other avenues as well, whether it's a small volunteer group, uh, whether we use fundraising. There's lots of options out there for us to explore.
Definitely open to discussion. Yeah, um, I mean, we just wanted to bring this to you, um, and you're, you want to work with, work with the district.
Councillor Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, that was a great presentation. Uh, you guys uh spent a lot of time on this, I see. We, uh, where I have heard myself, I've received a few complaints against of dogs and and a lot of times, like you say, it's not really the dog's fault at all. It's, it's the owners. It's the owners that, you know, aren't, aren't training them well. But um, I, I, I do think that we have a problem over there and education is the key. Um, how we, you know, we've already passed our budget for this year, but you know, maybe give this to staff and staff can just do a little bit of homework on costs and things like that. And then we can regroup. I think it would be, I, I think, I think it's great.
Thank you. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I like this idea. I think councillor McCabe's suggestion is maybe it is a lot of information to absorb in one sign, but I, the concept I think is excellent. I, I know we've had some, you know, really bad instances there. I certainly donated to a fund where a dog was seriously injured because of, I would say, an irresponsible owner. Um, bringing it to the dog park and there does seem, I totally agree with you that there seems to be an escalation of, you know, bad moments, let's say, in the dog park, and they shouldn't be. So what we can do around education, I'm in a hundred percent agreement of. Um, because I, I do think it ultimately comes back to the owners. And if there's something there that other owners can point to saying, hey, your do, your dog's in the red zone or in the yellow zone and we think it's going to go to red, then, you know, you need to start figuring this out right away. I think it's a good idea because it could give other dog owners that information to, to call out those other owners as well.
Just why we also ended the third bottom of the sign. It says, it's the law.
Right.
And you know, I think you are sentimental, but your problem would be for your child or, you know, gone to a car accident. So I think it's, you know, this does give people something to, to really think about. Hopefully learn. And I know it's a lot of information. I tried my very hardest to put my twenty years of education into very simple wording. And it was very hard. I could probably like three times the size, but it's, yeah, I know, I think it's something we can discuss too. It, I don't want to get rid of anything that's on there, but if, you know, there's any ideas to make some of the wording less or make it straight to the point.
Looking grateful to be here, please allow us to put that next to you and your, my question, suggestion, we, yeah. We just want to.
Well, there's a lot of dog lovers on council, so. Councillor Evans.
Yeah, and just, uh, thank you, just as a, uh, an additional idea, this would also make a great handout if there was a little jirac there, because people could take it away and then study and get to know it as well, even if they just kind of glance at the sign. But I, I do think it would help. Um, because I think some folks don't understand that their own dog is actually starting to do something aggressive. This would help educate them towards that, so.
It's like a ducky in that picture. You never think that the happy-go-lucky dog was the one that was causing all the problems.
Councillor McCabe.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think this is a good idea. Um, I had a dog buddy in his past now, but that, that was his, uh, favorite go-to place.
Yeah.
Even bark on the highway when I, before I even turned left and went down across the bridge. Um, yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we forward this to staff to, to look at and come back with recommendations to council.
Okay, we're motion the secondary. Councillor Bushel, uh, some discussion about that. Um, the only thing I would add is, um, maybe just looking to staff on some potential budget. There's a cost to it. Um, I guess I'll look over to you, Bianca. Is there? There is, okay. Right, so do we, um, yeah. Okay, all in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
You. You'll be.
It's not only Joe.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both. That was a great presentation. So continuing on with the theme of dog say, which is a great theme. Uh, Mary Ann, you're up. Talk about a small dog park consideration.
Good afternoon, councilmen and staff. My name is Karen Ann Isom. Great number, you know who I am. Uh, I'm here to say that I had sent a, a letter to council on April thirteenth asking for consideration of a small dog park area in the existing dog park. I did go, I wasn't present at the time, uh, and I did go back and look at the two, two meeting and I kind of feel like my ask was kind of um, misunderstood. Uh, I know that you kind of had and did a beautiful um, advertising on the district's um, site to have people be responsible for their dogs and beyond leashing and so forth. And it's very well done. However, that's not what I was asking for. I was asking for uh, an area where small dogs generally under about forty pounds can have an area of their own. Uh, as stated in my letter to mayor and council, a number of small dogs have been severely frightened or injured while being exposed to larger, exuberant or aggressive dogs in the onclish area. Even a large friendly dog can be intimidating and unintentionally harm a small dog when trying to play. This becomes a problem when a dog is injured. And as we mentioned before, the amount of veterinary bills that follow that issue. Um, I'm not a guy like you, Daryl, where I know all about fencing and things that have to happen, but in my naive research, I did a little research on chain link fence and posts. And then I came up with an estimated amount of about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars, and I'm sure the district can get materials for less than that. Um, I have submitted a sample drawing of how it could be accomplished, just taking up a small portion of the, of the dog park itself. Um, my, my measurements are not the scale. It's a hand drawn map. It's certainly not as beautiful. Presentation is my previous, yeah, it's here, but um, you know, I think it could be accomplished quite easily and be constructed very quickly. I'm also confident that many small dog owners in our community would appreciate this project being approved to ensure the safety of their fur babies and then, and not incur the costly expense of that. Therefore, I'm respectfully asking council, if you will kindly reconsider the approval of this proposal and proceed with construction for the enjoyment of our pups as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Hey, question. Councillor Bushel.
Through the chair. Mary Ann, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention again. Um, you know, like we know, you know, you're not the first person to ask for a small dog park uh, since I've been on council and, uh, um, and we know we have a problem. I actually have a contractor that, uh, takes his dog to the dog park every day a couple of times. And, uh, and he's had a problem. Uh, he just brought it to my attention again. And yeah, I think, uh, it's something we should really consider looking at and then narrow down the costs and, uh, and I, I think we should hand this back to staff. Would, I would like to make a motion to support that, to go to staff and come up with a, a, a small dog park for, for our residents, small dog.
Okay, by councillor Bushel, you seconded, seconded by councillor Evans. So, uh, yes, discussion on the motion. Yeah, councillor Evans.
Thank you through the chair. I, thanks for clarifying, Mary Ann, and, uh, um, we do have a lot of space there, so I think that, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, the measurements can be given, taken, it's just I'm on according to the Home Depot rules of chain link fence, so I'm going to leave that some of the, it's not mine.
Great one. Okay, well, I'm, I'm in support. I, I, I wonder, does, does staff have any comments? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to give you an opportunity as well. Uh, Daryl, did you want to?
Well, yeah, through the chair. I think, um, what's being proposed, we've probably utilized the one side already, possibly two. So there could be some savings there. We would stay probably consistent with what's there, right? So the standard four foot tall, because I knew this was coming forward, it's a little uh, twenty-five to thirty per linear, linear meter. We want this to be black if we're going to make it look like the dog park. So we're, we're somewhere around forty dollars uh, for linear foot, sorry, linear foot. So you're coming around four grand, then you'd be looking at a gate, so it would be sold for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I, I think in defense of staff too, when we were considering it, I think it was being discussed in a smaller area as well. So may, I think it's just one of these, it's really great to have you here today because it clarified the whole situation. And, uh, that's always good. It's always good to have people here and, uh, face to face because it gives council an opportunity to to ask those questions and figure out, are, do we actually understand what's being asked? And I think, I think we're there today. So we have a motion. Any further discussion on that motion? No? Uh, call the question then, all in favor? Okay, I'm so passed.
Just, just for clarification. So similar to the sign, staff will work, um, together to come up with some options for council and come back to council.
Yes, correct, correct.
So you'll see that come along council agenda, uh, soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Those are great presentations. Those were feel-good presentations, weren't they? Okay, so moving on. Um, official community plan review. Dan Penner and Catherine Kinsman, you're up.
If you're worse than me with the slides or you do that.
Pardon me.
All right.
Right, so, um, yeah, before I jump in, I just want to say I really appreciate everyone's flexibility on what was quite a hectic travel day. So thanks to the delegations involved and you can come order around here, but appreciate that.
Tough act to follow.
That's what I was saying, as a small, I'm a nice with the past delegation. So, um, yeah, if we want to jump into the official community plan, uh, really the purpose of this presentation is really just a brief kind of twenty-minute introduction to uh, ourselves, the project team, Urban Systems, you know, myself, uh, Catherine and other folks that are going to be involved in this project as we go through. Uh, looking at the official community plan update scope of work and what are really the broader objectives? What are we trying to accomplish through this update over the next sixteen months? Uh, so as part of that, we'll look more specifically at the work plan. So the tasks and phases of work that are ahead of us. Uh, some of the key deliverables and timelines that are going to, you know, be produced through this project. Um, really briefly touch on some of the key land use trends or challenges or considerations, uh, that, you know, we're looking at that. We've got, you know, some tweaks or changes to the current official community plan and then next steps. Uh, we do have the big, uh, target or timeline or milestone coming up in June, which involves vision and engagement. So we'll talk a little bit about that and then just give you a, a little bit of time, uh, for any questions, comments, thoughts that you want to have. Uh, we also have an open house later tonight if you want to have more discussion there, uh, as well. So I know you probably have a busy agenda, so we'll do that. That's not there.
And just one question, as we go through it, would you prefer questions at the end or would you prefer councillors to ask on a particular subject as we go on?
Either way, if your preferences, if you have a, you know, if you have a good question, feel free to jump in at any time. We can do it that way.
Okay.
Or it's better.
Perfect. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, so just a little bit about myself. Uh, I'm a senior planner and partner, uh, with Urban Systems. I've been in the company for, uh, going on eleven years now. Uh, I do a lot of land use, community land use for community planning, economic development type work. Uh, work a lot with First Stations as well. Uh, I'm based in Clota. Uh, I'm here with, uh, one of my colleagues as well, Catherine. Yeah, uh, she's in the, the Clota office, uh, with me as well. Go to the next slide. Uh, just, uh, you know, we, we've worked with, with the district here on, on a number of fronts over the years. So you might have some familiarity with this. So yeah, community planning, engineering, landscape architecture, um, urban economics, all sorts of, all sorts of things. Uh, next slide. Uh, we have twenty offices, seven hundred employees. Um, Sycamore is, is kind of right smack in the middle of our cameras, already in Clota, in Golden offices. So we have a lot of folks around here. Um, so yeah, now we'll get to the more exciting stuff, uh, the project itself. So, uh, just taking a step back, um, in the sort of, you know, the, the initial stages of this project, um, back in February, we prepared a, a proposal and was, um, response to a request for proposal that the, the district issued to complete an update to the official community plan. So through that review process, we were selected as the, uh, the successful proponent. Um, and you know, started this project, uh, kind of mid-April. Uh, we had our, our initial kickoff meetings, uh, myself and Dee had a little bit of back and forth, just really confirming the scope and the objectives of the project, and then we jumped right into things. And, uh, one thing to really emphasize, uh, sometimes when we do OCP updates, they're like comprehensive review and updates. Like, you know, our, our job is to go in, uh, and really develop a document that sets like a, a bigger new direction. Uh, our objective or our scope of work for this project is more on the refresh side where, you know, there's a lot of components within the existing OCP that are working well for, you know, the community, for your staff. Um, you know, there may be some leaks or some things along the way that we can change or modify to, to make it a more functional document or a more plan for the community. Uh, and you know, through that work, addressing some of the legislative compliance requirements, uh, that all municipalities or local governments, uh, in B C are required to do. So very much a, a review to refresh, uh, through a streamlined process. Very much a, a review to refresh, uh, through a streamlined process. So going back to the, the project goals, uh, you know, the biggest one and the trigger for this project, like every other local government, there needs to be an update to the OCP within the twenty twenty-five uh, timeline. Um, and, and that's again tied back to some recent legislation largely about. Uh, integrating, uh, you know, findings from your housing needs report, housing needs projections and. During that the OCP aligns with those projections and supports it. Um, but you know, even, even with that in mind, it's still a great opportunity to sit down, uh, you know, as a community and understand, are there conditions or trends or new priorities, you know, emerging or evolving in our community that we can better reflect in. The bylaw and plan that is really the overall, uh, overall, getting encompassing by law on growth and development in the community. So you know, understanding that really involves the community, right? We have to go out, we have to speak with yourselves, we have to talk to community members, stakeholder groups. Uh, community organizations, the general public. So we're gonna be doing that through a engagement process, but for the sake of the timeline we have to hit, it's gonna be a bit more streamlined. Uh, but we have some good, you know, methods or some good tactics to, to do it in that manner. Uh, it's also a great opportunity to, you know, look at existing, you know, policies or provisions in the current OCP and say, can we, you know, improve the clarity of these, improve the. Implementation or the implementability of these things. Uh, knowing it's not just a document for your staff, it's a document for community, for landowners, for developers when they're trying to, um, you know, do things, so. Good opportunity to, to do a bit of a policy review, um, you know, focus and update key, key sections and content, so. Through, through discussions with your staff, we've kind of identified some areas of higher focus, including uh, some, you know, review and, you know, potential changes to your development permit areas and related guidelines. Uh, and then again, cause it's been ten years since the last OCP was really, really updated, or about ten years. You've done so much work since that time, that needs to be reflected in that document, so just making sure it aligns with some of your recent plans, strategies and other. Other policies that, uh, have been established since then. So the ski sections that we're really gonna narrow in, uh, on through this review include, um, residential land use designations and policies in response to some of the recent, uh. Bill forty-four zoning changes that were enacted. Uh, so again, we need to make sure that there's alignment between your, uh, residential policies, the OCP and the zoning that's now put in place. Uh, we have to integrate the housing needs assessment projections and demonstrate that the policy direction of the OCP supports. You know, being able to achieve that. We know we have to, you know, enable six hundred and eighty units roughly over the next twenty years. We have to ensure that the policies can support that or enable it. Um, the development permit area updates as well, the real focus here is on. For the environmental type thing, so looking at creating a DTA for hazardous areas, so steep slope areas. Uh, as well as the, the district internally is doing some work, um, on, uh, some potential recurring, uh, development permit, uh, recurring development permit area and related guidelines. Uh, we'll do some general housekeeping updates as well, like over time definitions change, um, you know, there might be some mapping inconsistencies we need to iron out. And then, you know, where we can strengthening, uh, we'll, we'll dig more into it as we get into it, but, uh, there was a note that there are some areas where the policies could be maybe written in a stronger way to support enforcement. Uh, on the district's end. And then just, uh, modernizing contents, uh, with respect to the agricultural and reserved agriculture in the community, so. Other things will probably emerge and evolve, uh, you know, rise to the service through the work, but right now that's kind of where our focus is. Uh, in terms of the actual process, uh, to meet that twenty twenty-five timeline, we, we are like. Well underway, uh, we have a very streamlined, uh, process here, so there's five phases of work. Uh, the first phase, uh, in, in April and in early May, it was really the initiation phase, so start of meetings, getting a communications and engagement planned together. Collecting a lot of, uh, background information from, you know, the district, including all of your G I S shape mapping, uh, G I S, uh, mapping shape files and other information. Uh, phase two, which we're just sort of teetering out of, uh, was the technical review part, so. Doing a bit of a background and technical review on, you know, conditions, how things evolved since twenty fifteen, uh, I don't need, yeah, I'm sure I don't need to tell you some of the notable changes that occurred in the community. Uh, there's a lot of data to back that, um, you know, having this council meeting, uh, our open house later tonight, um. And following that, we're gonna complete our little technical memo, which really just says, these are some really noticeable things we picked up doing our. Background review and talking, you know, the community, you know, during that first open house that we feel need to be reflected or could inform changes to the OCP. Uh, the next big phase, uh, which is gonna come very quickly, is the community exploration phase, so engagement. Uh, sitting down with the community and trying to get their feedback, their perspectives on, where do you see the community changing and evolving? Uh, what are the priorities that we need to address or focus on, or at least discuss through the context of this project? Uh, taking all of their feedback and putting into an engagement summary report that we will deliver to you and present back to you. Uh, before we advance, uh, to phase four, which is preparing the actual updated draft, reviewing it internally with staff. Collecting their feedback and then preparing a second draft, which will then go into the reading process as part of phase five, so first and second reading, there's. Agency referrals, uh, required at that point, uh, and then finalizing, you know, for third reading and adoption, so. Uh, a lot of work ahead. I know I explained a, a lot of project work in a very short timeframe, but uh. There's also a lot of little things that, that come along the way with this work as well, uh, so I've been very appreciative of the responsiveness of your, of your staff and. Communicating with us and giving us the information, uh, that we need to push things ahead. Uh, in terms of engagement, um. So this, this really engagement that we're doing right now is really about initiating the project and trying to understand from the community's perspective, like what. Opportunities, what the needs, what issues have sort of emerged over the last, you know, five to ten years. Um, but also informing them of like, what is an official community plan, what is this project, why are we doing it? So that, that's really the focus of tonight's open house. Um, and some of the communications that we've been putting out. Uh, part of this, uh, process too, uh, this was a good idea from, from Dean and is doing some early agency referral, so. Instead of waiting to the very end of the process to refer out to the Agricultural Land Commission and different ministries and other. Other government agencies and entities, doing a bit of an early referral to see like, do you have any comments or things that you would like us to. Think about or consider like early stages, so that's something that, yeah, we'll, we'll be getting into shortly. In June and July, uh, we're going to be doing the engagement, like the, the big engagement team, so. Uh, community survey is gonna be going out, um, we're gonna be doing what we call an OCP in a week engagement, and I'll talk a bit about, uh, that on the next slide. Uh, we'll have a, a more focused workshop with yourselves to, to dig into some of these topics in a more, you know, granular level, so. We'll have that opportunity to, to really talk about things, um, in June. And then, uh, yeah, presenting all of that information back in that summary report, and then. The last bit of engagement will be more focused on the reading and adoption portion, so again, it'll be opportunities for. Uh, the community to sit in and listen and, and, you know, provide feedback that way as well. So, OCP in a week, it's an engagement method, uh, that we, we utilize quite frequently for all sorts of planning projects, OCPs. Strategic plans, economic development strategies and so forth. Uh, and it's really about, um, realizing there's a lot of benefit inefficiencies by putting all the mere engagement activities for a project. Together over consecutive days instead of spanning them out over, you know, weeks or months. Uh, so I use this quite frequently, I think it's a really great, uh, approach. And it really involves us coming into the community and establishing, establishing, establishing ourselves, like setting up shop here in Sycamore for two to three days. Sort of in the community, like eight A M till eight P M. You know, normally these planned in a week engagements can go four or five days where we're, you know, taking a storefront in the downtown and using that as our engagement hub. Just for the, the sake of the, the timeline for this project, we, we've, and, and, you know, the scope involved, we can shorten to two days. Uh, but we're hoping to do like back to back to back to back, uh, activities throughout those two days, so. Uh, meetings with staff, youth engagements, um, community open houses, senior engagements, stakeholder workshops, pop-up booths. Um, just trying to get as much feedback as we can in those two days. On the third day, uh, we'll do a little bit of, you know, pop-up booths type engagements. And then spend, uh, the rest of the morning really synthesizing what we've heard to date and then present it back to you as part of that third day, so. Why, why I really like this is in a very short timeline, we can get some additional directions, um, that we've heard from the community in front of council. And get your perspectives on it before we go and start actually drafting a full OCP, so it just really helps speed things up. Terms of communications, uh, again, you know, a big part of this project is getting the community aware of what's happening. So we have a project specific page on the district's website. Um, we have content that's going out through the district's social media channels, uh, there's a community newsletter. That we've been using or we will be using for certain updates throughout the project. Uh, you know, different parts, we will be doing like direct outreach to agencies, stakeholder groups, you know, sending them invites and letters to, to come participate in our meetings, uh, later on. Uh, the district has also noted, uh, we'll be doing some indigenous engagement and outreach, but that will be led more internally. Uh, you know, we're happy to support on that as well, but, uh, you know, the feeling was, you'd better suit coming from the district and not a consultant, which I think makes a lot of sense. Definitely, it's been great, and again, really big kudos to staff for getting the website out very quickly and just being really helpful on, on getting the communications up, because that honestly is like one of the biggest milestones or biggest hurdles in a project like this, is getting that information out. So we have some information, uh, on some poster boards at our open house tonight that really look at some of the, these kind of key areas that we're looking at, so demograph, uh, demographics, population growth. We know, you know, there's a, you know, an aging curve here in the community, uh, and it's, uh, you know, growing, uh, over time. You know, we know, uh, in terms of the housing stock, you know, there is growing diversity, like things are changing, but it's still largely like a uniform housing stock focused on single family homes. Uh, we have, you know, information on, you know, economic and labor force conditions, um. We have, uh, you know, a bunch of mapping as well to show some of the conditions of your existing land base, environments, infrastructure and so forth, so. These are the areas that we're really focusing on tonight, and when we prepare the, uh, taking stock report, that background review report, really looking at. What are the conditions in these areas and what are some takeaways that we need to consider with respect to. Changing or adjusting the OCP, knowing that it's a review, not a comprehensive, or a refresh, not a comprehensive, uh, review. Uh, yeah, just quick next steps. Next two months, so we'll complete the open house tonight, uh, take some of that feedback, frame up our final taking stock reports, submit that to staff. Um, you know, for review. Uh, while that's happening, uh, what's probably the most immediate next step is to like lock in the dates, times and venues for the OCP in a week engagement, which we're hoping to do the week of the sixteenth, seventeenth. So that, uh, second slash third week of June. Um, so getting noticed is that very quickly. Uh, completing that engagement and then preparing you with the, the summary report at the end of it, really says, this is what the community's been telling us and how we're going to consider the, you know, the OCP update, so. Um, yeah, that's, that's it. I know that was a lot to go through in a short timeline here, so I appreciate everyone listening, and if there are any questions or comments, I'm happy to stay as long as needed, uh, to respond.
Sure, there's gonna be a couple, but thank you very much for that presentation. Did you have anything to add about the process or before we take questions?
We appreciate that Urban Systems is taking on this project and it's great to see it started. I think there's some key updates that we're gonna see in the OCP, there are legislative requirements. We're looking at the riparian piece as an added component of our D P's to bring. Development permits into the district instead of going strictly through the problems for them, which will save some timelines on development. Other components, including the natural hazard piece, are gonna help us in the long run as a community. But as was stated, this isn't an overhaul of the OCP, it's an update to it and to meet some legislative requirements. So thank you for being here. Welcome to Sycamore.
Welcome, okay, council, questions, comments? Counsel Bushel.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, our presentation, Dan, um, through the legislation, like is, is, uh, is the province. Uh, mentioned anything about upgrading, like a review in the old, the A L C, uh, A L R, uh, conditions or anything? Cause I, I heard something at U V C M last year that they were trying to, uh, take a look at it, but I haven't heard anything recently.
Uh, nothing that's being exercised in the context of like OCP updates this year, like I don't, like nothing that I've heard, I don't know, you know, if you've heard anything, uh, either. Uh, in the context of this project, uh, really, you know, there have been some minor. Like A L C kind of policy changes since twenty fifteen, and it's just seeing how that reflects back to the current like agricultural policies in the OCP, so I wouldn't expect really major changes, you know, we're not. Looking at considerations for other opportunities to like maybe, you know, put an exclusion application in, you know, grown in certain areas, like we're really. Just doing like a bit of a due diligence check on the agricultural section, uh, at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Other further questions? Well, I, I have a couple. When you talk about demographics and population growth, you're gonna try to model that. Um, is it more along the lines of. Where we hope it'll go or what, or, or where it is going? I, I, I guess maybe just dive into that a little bit deeper, what, what that means in terms of.
Yeah.
OCP.
Yeah, unless, you know, unless you're willing to put like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to hire a professional photographer to come in and like really do a, a scientific, you know, approach to, to population projections, it really is more of an, an art and a science and. For me, the value of having that, that type of information in a plan like this is about establishing goalposts to say. You know, based on historic growth patterns, how we sort of evolved over the last five, ten, twenty years. You know, these are different scenarios of how we may grow, you know, normally we'll establish like no low median and high scenarios based off of like assumptions that we make. And that information, you know, it's just about establishing parameters, if we know generally this is where we might end up, it can help inform like on our end. Uh, you know, decisions about policies that we need to include for things like housing, you know, recreation spaces, uh, you know, commercial uses, you know, employment areas, things like that.
Yeah, fuck, go ahead, counsel, thanks. Um, yeah, ten years goes fast. And, uh, like, uh, some of these veterans are on the table, we may have the old time. The, uh, the question I have was in regard to how does Urban Systems usually engage the youth to get youth feedback?
Um, we, I, I personally use like many different tactics there, um, and it really depends on like the local context and what works on the community, so that's something that we'll talk with your staff, like, you know, are these things that you, it might work. Some examples are, you know, well, you know, if there's a, a high school that has like a dedicated like youth leadership type program, you know, normally we'll, we'll use them as a bit of a sounding board and hold like focus groups with them and. You know, work with them to like get information from their peers or from, you know, their classmates. Uh, you know, some school districts are very flexible, uh, and will allow us to come into like a school and do classroom to classroom activities, which for me is like. By far the best, as in one day you can talk to five, six, seven hundred kids, get all of that feedback really efficiently. Um, you know, sometimes it's more challenging to like get access in the schools for, for, you know, good reasons. Uh, we'll provide materials for teachers that wanna volunteer to be part of this and they can administer to their classrooms like handouts or little workbook activity type things. Um, so there's many different, you know, ways in which you can approach it, it just, you know. Depends on what will work best in the community, right? Like something might work better in Sycamore than elsewhere.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, just to follow up, we might be able to, um. Get you hooked up with the principal to be able to get a couple of, uh, leadership type kids from the school and you guys could go in and talk to them, so, just to, just as an idea.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, I think that would be a great, a great option, uh, something to definitely include.
Good high school of a hundred and fifty kids, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any, uh, further questions or comments? Um, do you need anything from council direction or?
This is an update for council, you're gonna see these regularly all the way through the year. Towards the completion of the project in November, so there'll be lots of opportunities for input and questions. First session is tonight, um, so we'll hear from the community. Hopefully, we've been promoting it in the community and we get some people out to give some feedback and some ideas. And then we'll just carry it forward from here.
It's a beautiful night, take a walk down to the red barn. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, see you soon.
Okay, moving on, which. No department update, so. Council reports, start with you, Council Evans.
Short report today, thank you, Mr. Chairman, we, um. I went to the, uh, Oregon original library board meeting last week in Kelowna. And, um. Just as part of your council here, I, I worked with all the other board members to try and keep costs low. Um, have, even though costs are going up, um. I just wanna reiterate the amazing resource that our library is, not only is it a good place to come and read, but. Any book you want, they will get it for you. All you gotta do is go in there with your library card and ask for it. As well as the old formats of DVDs and all that stuff as well, if you happen to have an old DVD player, but, um. Is the average North American man me, reads one book after high school, so, uh, I would say, uh. It's all the guys out there, here's the challenge, let's read another book this year, okay?
That is a shocking stat, actually. Uh, Counsel Bushel.
To the chair, yeah, I had a pretty quiet couple of weeks, um, I did attend the Planning and Development Committee, which was a. Kind of like a little bit of a repeat of the OCP introduction, which was good, um, also attended on Saturday, R C M R SARS, uh. Fan opening for their, uh, the boathouse base, base, and that was really well attended, um. Yeah, it was really well done, who are, you guys gotta get down and see that building, it's amazing. And, um, yeah, the balter, I, I worked this weekend, so I just was able to slip over just between when I was grabbing a sandwich and. Went to the Ball Diamonds just for a quick look and wow, that was, uh, Jake's doing a great job with those balterns, brings a lot of people to the community. That's all I got from the report.
Yeah, well, it sounds, sounds quite a bit. Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, so my portfolio, portfolio is health and another one is housing, so in health, just an update on the. So in health, just an update on the community health center, it should be up and running in July, I think, I believe. That's good news for our community. And in the housing front, we donated some land to the Eagle Valley Senior Housing Society back behind, around Gordon Mackey Lane there and that building's up. And we also donated some land on Main Street here and that project is moving forward with the commercial on the bottom and then four stories of purpose-built rentals. And I think there's a private development on Temple moving ahead too for purpose-built rentals in the form of townhouses. So we haven't had purpose-built rentals in Sycamore for forty-five years and now we have quite a few on the drawing board. So it's looking good. I also attended the Business Excellence Awards put on by the Chamber. Went to the farmer's market on, on Friday, it's a lot of venues, I think there was over forty, forty vendors there. And I also attended the boathouse grand opening of the boathouse, which is the only rescue boathouse in freshwater boathouse in B C. So for town, small town, we're doing great.
Thank you very much for your report and, and the point on housing is quite significant. I think people will see a significant amount of construction throughout the summer. And, and it's all good, it's housing and it's something the community needs a lot, so thanks for pointing that out. Just a note on why I'm chairing today, the mayor and Counselor Beach, they're working hard. They're actually on route to Ottawa right now to attend the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. So they're literally flying, but they're not just missing the meeting, they're out there working on behalf of the community. So I just wanted to make that clear and, and I know they'll have a really important next, next meeting about the activities that went on there. And it's always a very important conference and we're well represented there with both of them. I also attended the, the Chamber Commerce Event. I went quickly to the market, I was doing some catering that night and my other work, but it was amazing. I was stunned at how many vendors there were and just how many people were there enjoying it. And I think that was, that was great. Thankfully the weather actually cooperated that evening as well. And then just chairing planning and development and, yeah, that's it. So, okay, we're going to go into public input. Do you have any comments they'd like to make? Anyone online that would like to say anything to council? Don't be shy if you need to say something. Okay. Yeah, no, no worries. Giggles is fine. That's great in the council chamber. I encourage that. Okay, seeing them, we will move to adjournment, kind of a motion to adjourn the cow meeting at two oh one. Counselor Evans, Counselor Bushel, favor. Okay, we're adjourned, we'll be back at five o'clock.